We are back. Let's jump in. Tony, would you please take the roll?
Jimenez.
Present.
Torres.
Present.
Cohen. Ortiz.
Present.
Davis. Dwan.
Here.
Candellis.
Here.
Foley. Botra.
Present.
Kamay.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
Cohen, you have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're on to item 8.4, which pertains to a Home Key Program Round 3 application for a property on South 11th Street. It's a short staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Reagan Henninger, I'm the Deputy Director of the Housing Department. I'm joined by Jackie Morales Ferrand, the Department Director. And we are here this evening seeking authority to apply to the state of California's Home Key Program. Since the inception of the Home Key Program, San Jose has had great success, receiving four Home Key Awards totaling over $107 million, which were comprised of three hotels and one interim housing site. Combined, the Home Key Awards thus far will create 441 new units for people experiencing homelessness. For this third round of Home Key applications, we'll build on that success and our expertise. And our priorities are addressing gaps in our current homeless and housing system and leveraging partnerships to address operating and service costs at sites. This year, the state has some new requirements for Home Key. Most notable is a 30-year affordability covenant. Also, applicants will be scored higher who can demonstrate operating funding leverage. And referrals to Home Key projects must be made through a regional coordinated entry system, which to date on previous Home Key projects, the city has not used coordinated entry. So for example, on our interim housing referrals, we take referrals directly from San Jose street outreach teams and targeted encampments. These new requirements from the state are something that is often more typical in permanent affordable housing deals. So for this round of Home Key, the Housing Department did do a request for information process, seeking proposals. A panel comprised of Housing Department staff, the County Office of Supportive Housing, and the Housing Authority staff evaluated the proposals. There were 11 responses, eight from hotel owners who were seeking to sell their property but had no developer partner or service provider partner. And then there was a rehab and a new construction proposal submitted that were not selected by the panel for a variety of reasons, including feasibility, cost, and site control. The panel did select a rehab project located on South 11th Street in the downtown. The developer is Urban Housing Communities and the service provider is YWCA Golden Gate Silicon Valley. The proposal is for 25 units of housing for survivors of gender-based violence and human trafficking. The site also has potential for an onsite childcare center, and the project will also leverage operating subsidies from the County Office of Supportive Housing. So today's action will authorize the department to submit an application to Home Key. The applications are due at the end of July, and so due to the council recess, we had to come before you today to get that authority to apply. We will be back to you if we are awarded to get authority to purchase the property and appropriate any funds we would receive. And we are also planning to work with the council office on community engagement. And between now and when the application is due, we do have some continued due diligence to do on the property. And with that, we're available for questions.
Thanks, Reagan. Let's go to public comment first.
Paul, followed by Blair.
Oh, yeah, Posser from the horseshoe. This is an excellent use of public monies, considering that population has not... ...that happened due to domestic violence. Where the woman has to flee and the children are displaced. That being able to have a home and a space where not only the mother, but the child can be stabilized. Because, you know, they're confused, very, very confused. And the more that the city can invest in environments likely to address this particular social ill in our community, the better off we'll all be, because that is passed down as well. That's something that B. Remendas of Next Door had talked explicitly about when she created that nonprofit. Secondly, is that the nonprofits within proximity of these housing developments, that if that could be considered, like whenever you're putting in a specific segment of the population into a housing area, that automatically, that that should trigger some kind of relationship or some kind of connection with the nonprofit that's in proximity to that housing development? So that there could be kind of a seamless connection to that and also ensure that those nonprofits are fortified with everything they need for that population. Thank you.
Blair, followed by Brian. And Brian, we accidentally put your hand down, so please put your hand back up. Blair, go ahead.
Hi, Blair Beekman. I've learned an important additional step today. Actually, I learned two important additional steps today this past weekend. To talk more, when we're talking about comprehensive housing, we talk about sheltering programs for sheltering and the unhoused and truly affordable housing. And then the fourth one is preventative measures. How do we work towards preventative ideas? And Home Key is a part of the whole conundrum of ideas, or not conundrum, the whole process of ideas that just thanks, it has been a really good program. And like I've always tried to say, we have, you know, kind of our established good practices, how to really want to consider how to help the unhoused and the practices that were taking place before Home Key. That I think if we spend fundamental good time around, like learning to fund, you know, housing staff to follow the unhoused clients from beginning to end. We don't have enough of that, that we want to really do. Good luck in those sort of efforts, and there's certain programs like that that we always talk about, that this is really a time to really consider those things. Good luck how we can do that. Thank you.
I think this is a wonderful idea. Highly support it. Hopefully, we can recreate it. I think that's why they're going for the grant. The other thing is, I wish in developments, I know the city can't force people to do this, but highly encourage that there's always childcare available, no matter, even if it's a quote-unquote "high-end" development, because childcare is super expensive. I'm sure everybody is aware of that. Thank you.
Back to council.
Thank you, Tony. Councilor Torres?
Yeah, before I motion, I just have a couple of questions, actually. So, one, thank you for the presentation. And two, is this our first Home Key that is not technically a motel, since it's an old frat house on South 11th, right?
That's right. It's an old fraternity house. Our, we did have a previous Home Key application that was for interim housing, new construction at Branham and Monterey. This is our first-ever fraternity house.
Yeah, no, no, no. I've been, as somebody who has always wondered what happened to that fraternity, I'm okay that it's no longer there. I think it was the NAC, I don't know, N-A-K, whatever fraternity it was. But it was just sitting there, and I know that it had a lot of available apartments or rooms or whatever you want to call it. But it's also, is this the first one that we're actually, this is the first one that we actually, that is going to be providing childcare as well?
Yes.
Okay, great. No, I'm just excited that it's happening in District 3. I continue to say that our council district is doing its, you know, it's being proactive and making sure that we're housing our unhoused, especially folks who are experiencing violence in their lives, domestic violence in their lives. So with that, I motion to support item 844.
Great. Thank you, council member. Vice Mayor Kamay?
I really love that it's going to have childcare. I think that as we look for other opportunities, I think that that would be great to be able to find locations where that's available, so, or that it could be created, because I think that more and more, it's such a high need. So I'm delighted, and hopefully, we'll be able to get this, one way or another. Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Councilor Candos?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank staff for their work in bringing this application proposal forward. And especially wanted to highlight the value that we're going to get as a city, considering the potential operating costs that are going to be borne by the county. And that is especially significant, given how many people we're going to be able to help and the maximization of public work, whether it's city or county, on this housing crisis. So thank you.
Thanks, council member, and I echo the thanks. Really hope that this application comes through. It's a great project. Thank you to staff. Okay, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Davis and fully absent.
Great. Thank you again to staff. We're on to land use consent. We'll go to public comment first.
I have a member of the public, but there is no name. And this is for item 10.1C, filed number 23937. I don't know if they're still here.
If there's a member of the public who submitted a yellow comment card for 10.1C or any of the land use consent items, please feel free to come down now.
Oh, I know who it is. It's Alex. He submitted a letter.
There he is.
With you, yeah.
All right, Alex, come on down.
Yeah, he had submitted a letter that had his name on it.
Got it.
And that letter was emailed to all of you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My letter that I sent to everybody on council was titled "Good Afternoon." That's changed. So my wife and I have had a parcel in San Jose for almost 40 years, and we've got a pending tentative map application for 61 single detached homes, each to include an ADU using the city and state density bonus law. In spite of being proximate to high-quality transit corridor stops and two major transit stops, planning has insisted that we be downsized to 15. Adoption of tonight's amendments to CP 5-1 should help. Being proximate to high-quality transit according to CEQA guidelines, our project should always have been presumed to have a less-than-significant transportation impact. If our project was in the city of Mountain View, it would screen out and be exempt. We attended the Planning Commission hearing on May 25th, got stuck in traffic, but by the time we arrived at 7:00 PM, the amendments to CP 5-1 had been passed, and we missed public comment. We wanted the commissioner's help with several aspects and asked the same of you tonight. Our traffic consultant and we have had trouble getting responses to technical issues from the transportation portion of planning. We understand everybody is busy and we are just mom and pop, but direction and answers from a lead person would be helpful. The Transportation Analysis Handbook of April of this year, on the first page of Appendix C, cites a 2002 study which broadly concludes and provides a formula that a project whose proposed density is twice the surrounding existing density should reduce the VMT of a proposed project by about 30%. Both planning and CEQA allow specifics of a proposed project to be factored into the reduction of VMT for a project. Our project provides a density greater than twice that of the neighborhood. In the Planned Bay Area 2050, it identifies specific PRC statutes that allow CEQA streamlining of housing projects that meet conditions of a sustainable community strategy. We need an answer as to whether the city of San Jose has a...
Thank you.
Thank you. My other comments are in that letter. Thank you.
Paul Soto, followed by Brian. Kim, and move on to Brian, followed by Ruthie.
I don't know as much as I would like to, but that gentleman did make some good points. And it does go back to, and I think the mayor and council are trying to solve the staffing shortage issues, that the communication between citizens and different departments lacks, not because of steadfastness on the part of staff, but because they are inundated. And that goes for police officers, firemen. Even though people are becoming fully staffed, there's got to be tiredness, you know, and fatigue. I mean, we're just, after dealing with the pandemic and da-da-da-da-da-da. And I just want to reemphasize that. And I think from what I've saw in this gentleman's proposal, it sounds like a good deal. Thank you.
Yes, I wanted to speak on item 8.5. Is that included in this, Tony?
No, this is item 10.1.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll wait.
Yeah. Back to council.
Thanks. Just before we entertain a motion on land use consent, just pertaining to the gentleman who's waited very patiently now, it is no longer the afternoon, as he pointed out. Is there, is staff able to just kind of reference a next step here? Is this, obviously, better if we can take it offline, but since he has waited for hours, is there any? Are we aware of the property that's being referenced?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Chris Burton, Director of Planning/Building/Code Enforcement. We did get an opportunity to look at Mr. Syrex's letter earlier today. Obviously, his concerns that are raised are related to the development project, not to the consent calendar item, which is the changes to the VMT policy. We'll follow up directly and make sure we have answers to his questions.
I appreciate that very much. And so item C, which you referred to, does not impact your ability to work with him on that issue?
It does not.
Great, that's good to know. Thank you, appreciate it. Okay. Do we have, I don't see any hands.
Approval.
Second.
Thank you. Let's vote.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with Davis and fully absent.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Right, we are on to item 10.2. And we have a substantial staff presentation. Give everybody a moment to get down to the box. This is our general plan text amendment revising the general plan for the next housing element, RENA cycle.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Chris Burton, Director of Planning/Building/Code Enforcement. While our team is coming down to the box, I'll just start by expressing a lot of appreciation and gratitude to an amazing team. This is the culmination of almost three years' worth of work and some of the most important work we do in the development sphere to really resolve issues around the production of housing and to even go beyond with our policy framework. This is the first step in a process to certify the housing element. Obviously, there's a lot of work there, been led by our team that's here at the DIA, so Michael Brio, Jared Ferguson, Kristin Clements, and Ruth Cueto, but as well as a broad team across the entirety of the city departments who support us. So with that, I think I'm handing it to Ruth.
All right, I think we're just looking for the right presentation, and then we'll jump in. As Chris did, I'll take the opportunity to thank everybody on staff who I know have worked tirelessly for a very long time to pull together this iteration of our housing element, including a lot of back and forth with our partners at the state level. Thank you all for all of your work. Look forward to getting to a point where we're wrapping this up and have an approved housing element.
Thank you very much.
Knock on wood. All right, did we find the presentation?
Thanks, Ruth. Yeah. Okay, I'll kick it off, just its general introductions. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Ruth Cueto, and I'm a principal planner with Planning/Building/Code Enforcement. With me today is Kristin Clements with the Housing Department, Jared Ferguson with Planning, and Michael Brio, as well as Chris Burton and Jackie Morales Ferrand and Joshua Ishimatsu. The action before council is to certify the supplemental EIR and adopt a resolution approving the housing element and revising Chapter 7 of the general plan. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. We have it. So what is the housing element? The housing element is the city's official housing policy document. It's required by state law and incorporated into each city's general plan to guide housing policy. It's both a highly technical planning document and publicly focused policy and program work plan. What staff is presenting tonight is the culmination of a multi-year, multi-departmental effort to produce a substantially compliant housing element. It is a technical document, and we tried our best to present the information and execute this process in a more easily digestible format. This slide is a high-level view of the timeline of our work. We're now in Phase 5, the public hearing process. Given the technical nature of the document and the timeline, we decided to front-load a lot of the engagement and outreach at the beginning of the process. The draft sent to HCD in September of last year incorporates a community's input and feedback. The project team intentionally designed the engagement process to front-load feedback from community members. It is in this stage that the public is able to have the most influence. The early focus was on deeply understanding the range of housing needs, concerns, and issues, both through data and public feedback. This early input shaped the goals and policies included in the draft. Feedback on the two public review drafts led to further refinements. Since getting comments from HCD, staff has focused on meeting every two weeks and addressing HCD's detailed technical comments to achieve a substantially compliant plan as quickly as possible. Throughout the process, staff maintained a project website, provided regular updates through email and social media, and made ourselves available to answer questions and talk to community groups upon request. Public engagement has been a critically important part of the process to create this plan. San Jose placed a huge emphasis on doing outreach to educate and to get feedback through a variety of methods, both from general members of the public and some subject matter experts. We began outreach for our assessment of fair housing in 2019. We held focus groups of protected class residents. Then we assembled working groups on different program areas to help refine and prioritize ideas. We partnered with nonprofits to get residents speaking languages other than English to give feedback. And we've been hearing from folks, including emails and comment letters up until today. We've tracked feedback, including all, from all the events we hosted in 2019. Chapter 1 of the document provides a summary of the extensive process. Appendix H provides more detailed information. And each program and policy in Chapter 3 also cites the community feedback that supported that strategy to be included in the plan. This slide summarizes some of the statistics from our community engagement process, including convening over 100 meetings and engaging over 4,200 participants, which include duplicates. The city received compliments from several organizations about our extensive outreach process, and our state reviewer has been satisfied as well. This chart breaks down the city's new RENA goals, regional housing needs allocation goals, to accommodate 62,200 new housing units. And it breaks it down by income level of the units needed. Note that very low income also includes extremely low income. The second column defines how much of the total RENA goal is for each category. So 55% are in the first three rows, which we consider affordable housing. It goes all the way up to moderate income. And then 45% are above moderate or market rate. And the last column shows the change in the number of units in each category since the last cycle. Our total goal went up by 27, roughly 2,700 units. To clarify, the city's requirement for these goals is not to build the housing itself, but to plan to accommodate housing by putting in place land use policies, taking planning actions such as zoning, and executing on its policy and program work plan to further fair housing objectives and reduce barriers to housing production and preservation. And with that, I'll hand it over to Kristin.
Thank you, Ruth. In order to achieve the 62,200 goal of accommodating housing, the fair housing analysis that staff did together with a consultant indicates that there are several factors that have exacerbated our existing segregation in the community. So this lists some of those elements, and the programs and policies in Chapter 3 are designed to help address these conditions. Those programs also address the duties of the city to affirmatively further fair housing. And that means, how will the city proactively address these factors, which have contributed to our segregation, and then try to reverse the effects of past discriminatory practices? These policies include redlining, which create patterns of development that continue to deny communities of color equitable opportunities to build wealth even today. Our development patterns still disproportionately exclude protected class members from living in higher resource areas. So the state requires jurisdictions to seek to redress past wrongs and then to change inequitable patterns of investment by acting differently going forward. We need to minimize displacement of low-income renters and help house people without homes. Both of these groups that are high-risk are disproportionately residents of color. We also must increase housing access for people with disabilities and fight discrimination in the housing market. And the lens through which we do all of this work is to focus on increasing housing choices, especially for residents who are in legally protected classes under state and federal fair housing law. There's a long list, but just some of the classes include people by race and ethnicity, whether they're a senior, what their familial status is, their sex, gender, and sexual orientation, disability status, marital status, and even what income sources they pay for their rents with. That's called source of income discrimination. Almost half of the policies and programs in the housing element are those that especially affirmatively further fair housing, per staff's analysis, which the state required us to do. And those strategies actually require more targets and milestones than some other strategies do, which is why when you look at Chapter 3, not every row has the same level of specificity. There is a method to this madness, per the state. This slide outlines five major areas of needs that we identified and were our organizing principles for the housing element. principles for the housing element in some ways. We derived these areas of need from analyzing data and from public input at the many public engagement events and efforts that Ruth listed. First, the need obviously is to address affordability of housing and help prevent displacement. San Jose, of course, is one of the most expensive places to live in the country, and it's causing many families to move out of the area. The second need, obviously, clearly, is to address homelessness. And as we know, housing costs and local income inequality have both increased, and therefore have also increased homelessness. The third item is that we need to address segregation by race and ethnicity. It turns out that San Jose is one of the most segregated Bay Area cities. Fourth, the need is to address disparities in opportunity that exist among residents of different neighborhoods. Because of segregation and historic policies such as redlining, some residents have not had the same access to resources and to opportunities as others. And finally, we heard loud and clear about people who are living with disabilities. They consistently identified issues in our outreach process that they have great difficulty finding accessible housing and accessible, affordable housing. In addition to identifying housing needs in San Jose, the document also identifies and analyzes both non-governmental and governmental constraints on the maintenance, improvement, and development of housing for all income levels. So we know there are a lot of variables in the production of housing that affect whether it goes forward, but costs in recent years have been the most significant constraint on the supply of housing. Costs raised went up 17% in the Bay Area since the spring of 2020. Affordable housing's been constrained by cost and by the level of subsidy funds available from the state and the city. Page 6 of the memo points out that there is a structural imbalance between the amount of affordable housing we need and what it would cost, not only the city, to create the funds to support those homes, but also the external investments and loans that other parties would need to make. Over $4.8 billion needed from the city to actually meet the RENA goals, and another $19 billion in public and private sources for those deals. In terms of governmental constraints, we know, oh, I'm sorry, I wanted to note resident opposition. You know, we heard in some of the comments from the public that we really should cite resident opposition to housing citing as a constraint, and we did add it to the draft, and we did that analysis. We know opposition to new housing can lead to longer review periods or result in lower unit counts, so this both increases costs and reduces the amount of housing that we can get built. For governmental constraints, based on our analysis, fees and exactions that we have in San Jose are in line with other jurisdictions in the Bay Area. They do not represent an undue constraint on housing. However, because this is a key area that the city can directly control, we have included a program related to reevaluating the fees and taxes on housing periodically to ensure we don't create barriers to housing. Finally, the preparation of urban village plans requires, as we know, significant staff resources in planning. Staff's outlined a few programs in Chapter 3 to address the issue of fostering the urban village strategy and speeding it, such as completing sequer review as plans are adopted and streamlining the process further. So this slide is a summary of the five goals that we established for the housing element, and you can see each section of the types of strategies, also called policies and programs, that kind of snuggle up under each goal. Obviously, a lot of the programs could fit under more than one goal, but first goal is to create an abundant, unaffordable housing stock appropriate for our existing residents. Goal 2 is to have sufficient housing for people experiencing homelessness, and these strategies hook very closely to the community plans to end homelessness, that is a countywide plan. Goal 3, housing stability and opportunity to build wealth for all residents. This is where you see renter protections and legal services work, and then other issues related to access to housing. Goal 4 is about neighborhoods. This is a little bit more of a pronounced focus for this cycle of the housing element. The goal is that we have healthy, thriving neighborhoods that have access to all of these good amenities and are good places to live. Even if not every place is the same as others, that is part of fair housing, making sure that people's experience, once they leave their home, is a safe and positive one in the neighborhood that they live in. And then finally, Goal 5 is more of a systems goal. What would it look like if we, over time, did that systems work and focused on populations that really needed more help? Over time, we would be able to realize racially and socially inclusive neighborhoods that have been able to overcome present and past discrimination. So, trying to address all of these in a more specific way, the plan does include approximately, at last count, 132 programs and policies. Now, they all are linked to the five goals, and they all are, in this cycle, focused on not only production, but also preservation and protections for tenants. Many of the programs and policies that are laid out is work that staff has already been doing or has already been proposed and approved by the city council. So for instance, there are some items rolled over from the housing crisis work plan and pulled into the housing element. There are also strategies in there from the citywide residential anti-displacement strategy. So, under all three Ps, production has over 40 strategies related to both market rate and affordable housing. Preservation has about a dozen strategies, and, you know, the most notable that we've been talking about is no longer COPA, that's been removed, but to issue regular preservation NOFA's for acquisition and rehab of existing properties. And then finally, there are about 20 protection strategies. Council had directed us to look at a right-to-council program and the implications and other alternatives, and so that is in there. So, the express purpose of these programs and policies are to reduce barriers for production, to increase housing choices, and to lessen the effects of segregation. I did also want to note that the language that is used in these programs and policies is intentionally very balanced. It's aspirational on what staff believes are the right responses to what the state's direction is and the work they drive us to do, but it also respects council's power to ultimately make the policy decisions for these items, except for those items that are required by law. You kind of have to approve those. So, there's a lot in there, but we'll go on to the next section that Jared is going to talk more about the sites inventory and how we came up with that.
Thanks, Kristin. So, this table summarizes the residential capacity the city is using to meet our RENA requirement. State law allows us to use approved housing projects in the pipeline, anticipated ADU development, and anticipated development on opportunity sites. Opportunity sites are the largest category. To account for variation in the risks of projects not being developed like we expect in all of these categories, the unit capacity of our inventory is more than what is required by RENA. San Jose has a total buffer of 33%. The state recommends a buffer of at least 15%, and we're exceeding that here. The methodology we use to identify opportunity sites was based on the experience of development in the last cycle, and staff believes that we have created a methodology that provides a reasonable and realistic capacity based on our available data. Our 33% buffer also provides for additional variation or cushion should some sites fall short. Additionally, we have made revisions and added substantial analysis on the realistic capacity methodology based on HCD comments and feedback. All sites identified as opportunity sites allow for residential development under the general plan as it is today. This means that outside of North San Jose, all the sites we identified as opportunity sites can move forward with housing now. They have the appropriate general plan designation and zoning to facilitate housing, even though sites within unplanned urban villages. To further refine the sites inventory, staff filtered for parcels that had characteristics more conducive to development based upon experience in the past planning period. While the exact methods varied by location, generally this included filtering out properties that had existing multifamily uses, had existing planning permits issued in the last four years, had building permits issued for new construction in the last eight years, and were smaller than half an acre. To calculate a realistic capacity on the selected sites, the city worked with its consultant, Ptolemy, and their Building Blocks platform, which is the basis of our current SJ Housing Site Explorer. The methodology created to estimate capacity first looks at allowable residential capacity based on the site's general plan designation, then looks at historical trends of projects to inform capacity calculations. For each parcel in the inventory, the Building Blocks platform identified a set of five similar developments in the previous housing element cycle. These comparables were based on 19 factors. Using this tool and its methodology, staff was able to determine the estimated capacity of opportunity sites based on how each matched with properties and development activity from the previous cycle. The site inventory must also identify sites to accommodate housing development throughout the city in a manner that affirmatively furthers fair housing opportunities. HCD has advised that this means that sites identified to accommodate the lower-income portion of the RENA should not be concentrated in lower resource areas as defined by the state's opportunity maps. Staff has identified 89% of sites for lower-income RENA in moderate, high, and highest resource areas. Less than 6% of lower-income sites are in racially, ethnically concentrated areas of poverty, and approximately 70% of units are in areas where the median household income is over $110,000 and above. And with that, I'll pass it back to Ruth.
We want to note that since the Planning Commission hearing, staff has made changes to the document, as summarized in this slide. There were some error corrections and other changes are pursuant to feedback we received from HCD, but we're not able to incorporate into the Planning Commission version of the Next steps. If council approves the document, we will move swiftly to resubmit the document per state law requirements. HCD will have 60 days to review and determine whether we are in compliance or if additional changes are needed. With this timeline, we can expect to hear back from HCD by mid-August. We want you to note that in the council's resolution, there's language that most jurisdictions are using and our state reviewer and the city attorney's office are comfortable with. The resolution allows staff to make final, non-substantive changes before submitting to HCD for final review. So staff may tweak a couple of milestones, fix some typos, and double-check sites in the inventory if necessary. These next two slides, we'd like to address the council memoranda that was received on Friday regarding the housing element. The first memoranda is from councilmembers Ortiz and Torres. Generally, staff supports the proposed changes. We are requesting that Item 1A1 be modified from Implement to Explore, such a program as there is no funding identified for this work, and nonprofit capacity still has to be assessed. We would also like to keep Program S1 as-is in the housing element and integrate the amended version proposed in the memo into the Housing Catalyst Work Plan. The council memoranda from Councilmember Jimenez. In staff's opinion, the changes requested in the memo are not consistent or necessary per HCD's guidance. We believe this document substantially complies with housing element law, and it reflects the feedback received from HCD after nine months of working back and forth with them to address comments. Staff estimates that adding the work contained in this memo would require several weeks, if not months, of additional work that would further delay certification. Regarding Item 2, staff does not support the recommendation to remove Section 10 of the resolution. As we mentioned, this is standard language that other cities are using, and HCD is supportive of that approach. Without that language, the smallest change would drive the plan back through the public hearing process, causing several weeks of delay. The goal at this point is to get a certified housing element as quickly as possible. Also, incorporating a study session at this time would add an estimated two months to the submission deadline, timeline. Regarding Items 3A and 3B, HCD has reviewed the items listed in 3B and given us comments already, but has not required or requested these changes for additional milestones and metrics. We've been working with HCD over several months to focus on meeting their many technical requirements and believe that we've responded to all of their comments. However, if HCD does bring up additional comments on these or other items in the memo, we will revisit them. Strategies identified as AFFH were selected by an identified methodology. We will take another look to make sure nothing was inadvertently omitted, as a handful of items were combined. And then lastly, regarding Item 4, the housing element does have an existing language access plan. Staff created it in consultation with the Office of Racial Equity and Language Access Staff. We offered community meetings and online surveys in Spanish and Vietnamese. We've translated meeting notices, social media posts, and other outreach materials, as well as slideshows in Spanish and Vietnamese. And as we noted before, we included community-based organizations in our outreach efforts to encourage participation by limited English-speaking populations. Staff does intend to professionally translate the housing element chapters, though not the appendices, to Spanish, Vietnamese, and traditional Chinese. And that is, we hope to translate the certified copies, the certified versions of that document. Michael, did you want to?
Michael Brio, I'm on my knees, actually, encouraging highly to approve the housing element tonight. Also, maybe we can get a larger desk for staff, since there are so many of us working on this, we couldn't all fit. I will say that, you know, I think, as Ruth touched upon, we've had a lot of great dialogue back and forth on this housing element, and we've had multiple rounds with working with Chelsea, our commoner at HCD, and we're confident that, you know, we have a substantially compliant housing element. So we encourage you to approve it tonight. Delaying that in some way could, we don't want to sort of jeopardize chances of getting potentially housing and transportation grants down the road, if there could be potentially an impact to that if we delay significantly. In addition to that, I just want to note, I know that we've shared this with you privately, but a lot has changed since we've talked to you in 101s. We now have, as of today, there are coming in today 14 Builders Remedies projects. We have three in District 1, four in District 4, one in District 5, five in District 6, one in District 7, and three in District 10. And so, not approving it tonight would keep the window open for Builders Remedy projects. I just want you to be aware of that. And with that, we'll open it up to discussion.
Great, thank you. Thank you again to staff for what has been a very long and detailed process. Appreciate all of your work. Glad we're at this point. Let's go to a public comment first.
Okay, I have Anthony Tordeos, Robert Wood, Renee Baze, Timo Aguilar, and Emily Ramos.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is Anthony Tordeos, and I am speaking today to reiterate my concerns. The draft housing element before the council does not meet the requirements laid out by HCD and the state legislature, and is therefore unlikely to be certified by HCD in its current form. I have submitted a letter to council and HCD that I believe provides substantial evidence that the draft element overstates the realistic capacity of the sites inventory by tens of thousands of units. My letter also highlights several pieces of legally required analysis that appear to be missing from the current draft, including an assessment of the likelihood that opportunity sites in non-residential zoning districts will be developed with residential use, as well as a failure to sufficiently analyze the impediments to residential redevelopment posed by existing uses on non-vacant sites, both generally and most urgently for sites designated to accommodate lower-income units. I encourage council to vote against adopting the current draft and to instead instruct staff to submit it to HCD for subsequent review, while continuing to iterate and address public feedback and comments from council, HCDC, and the Planning Commission. I understand the city is concerned about the potential ramifications of continued noncompliance, but voting to adopt a flawed and incomplete element is not the solution and will ultimately set the city back even further if HCD chooses to refuse to certify the adopted element. HCD's Memorandum on Requirements for Housing Element Compliance from March of this year specifically recommends that jurisdictions adopt elements only after receiving a letter from HCD finding the draft meets statutory requirements. I encourage council to heed HCD's advice. If the council remains intent on adopting the draft element, despite the substantial concerns and evidence of non- concerns and evidence of non-compliance raised by members of the public, then I would encourage you to support Councilmember Jimenez's memo and specifically instruct staff to return to council for direction should HCD refuse to certify the current draft. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, next speaker.
I'm Robert Wood. I'm professor of strategic management at San Jose State, and I'm the chair of the Housing Committee of the San Jose State Faculty Union. And I want to say that as an educator and as a guy who spent more than twenty years in Boston, have two relevant degrees from Massachusetts institutions, I put a lot of energy into trying to articulate what San Jose could learn from Boston in these events that the staff conducted. And it wasn't really like they were trying to listen. If you read the description of constraints in the current draft, you would have no idea that the 2011 general plan increased constraints and that the city has the option of getting rid of those increased constraints. We, as our union, want to have those constraints undone. The performance of the city housing production since the adoption of the 2011 plan makes it extremely unlikely that anything remotely like sixty-two thousand units can be produced in the plan that is, that's been delivered. And I can't imagine that HCD is not going to see that. So I think we all need to be thinking about what happens if and when this state does not certify this plan. Thank you. If we in the university can do anything to help, we would love to do that.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff. Thank you for all your hard work on the housing element. I want to first thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Renee Baez, and I'm a field representative for the NorCal Carpenters Union. And today, I want to speak about three simple things which will benefit the housing element and the city of San Jose, and I believe these three things should also be basic labor standards. One is the use of apprenticeship programs. Two is healthcare for workers and their families, and number three is local hire. You see, projects that invest in apprenticeships, local hire, and healthcare is the right choice for construction workers and the community. Now, I'd also like to state and mention that cities like Foster City, Redwood City, and Menlo Park have already adopted this into their housing element, stating encourages developers and contractors to evaluate hiring local labor, hiring from or contributing to an apprenticeship program, increasing resources for labor compliance, and providing livable wages. So I'm asking that San Jose, one of the most influential cities in the state of California, also adopt similar language. You see, we can go around to any project in the area, Bascom Avenue, Silver Creek, West San Carlo Street. A lot of these projects do not have labor requirements, and they could be considered a crime scene just by how much these workers are getting robbed of their wages and benefits. And I don't believe that should be, that's right. Now, there's a few things that can taint the housing element: wage theft, tax fraud, human trafficking. There's a few things that can mitigate those. Requiring these developers and general contractors to hire a responsible general contractor who will do right by the workers and the community. I've mentioned this numerous times, and also on the Planning Commission. Now, I'd love to sit down and have a conversation, also forward these documents for Redwood City, Menlo Park, and Foster City, so you guys can look at them, and maybe you guys are missing out on something. It's already submitted. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, next speaker.
How's it going? Good evening, council members. My name is Timo Aguilar, and I'm also a union member from the NorCal Carpenter's Local 405 right here in Santa Clara County. I grew up right here in the East Side, Alamo Rock School District, and I would like to share my experience with everyone here that the carpenters has done for myself and my family when local projects adopt labor standards, such as what my partner was talking about. Construction apprenticeship programs have the resources and ability to lift our neighbors out of poverty and into a comfortable, middle-class lifestyle without drawing on the taxpayers. Our county's veterans here can be brought directly into our apprenticeship program through the How Much to Hard Hatch program. I was hoping that my veteran brothers were still going to be here, but it's a long time. I just wanted to share with them how I was benefit, I benefited from it, where I was tossed around so many jobs that were promising, hey, hire veterans, we're all about hiring veterans, but not really. The carpenters were the first ones that actually gave me an actual chance to a real career. And not only were their training fees taken care of, veterans can collect their GI bill while going through the program. Apprentices go through the entire program without owing a dime. It's even possible for apprentices to purchase their first homes close to where they work while in the apprenticeship program. To be able to create a local viable pool of skilled laborers is one of the main missions of the carpenters' union. The carpenters' union also offers excellent healthcare program where sadly so many workers have none. These workers have to rely mainly on social programs and overly taxed emergency rooms. When my son was injured while playing varsity football, he had torn a ligament in his hand and lost motor functions of one of his fingers. My son had the medical covers to repair his hand and bring him back to one-hundred percent functionality through top-notch physical therapy. If we adopt these sorts of standards, like living wage, apprenticeship program, good health and welfare program, you'll see the standards rise up in our community. Thank you so much.
Next speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Emily Ann Ramos, and I'm a member of the Housing Justice Work Group as part of the nonprofit Racial Equity Action Leadership Coalition, also known as the REAL Coalition. So consistent with the letter that we sent to council this morning, we are concerned that the COPA policy is not included as a possible strategy in the housing element, and there are no additional anti-displacement strategies to address the gap left when council did not move forward with COPA. We are also concerned with the lack of details in several other strategies. For instance, the city's local tenant preference policy should also include an anti-displacement preference with a defined radius or area, provide details on the percentage side, and create a metric that significantly reduces overcrowding in the East Side. We would also like to note that we support the Cisepuete Collectives Letter to the council, as well as the Collectives and the Anti-Displacement Coalition Letter to HCD. This also includes support for two council memos on this item, one from Councilmember Jimenez, and one, and the other, from councilmembers Ortiz and Torres. It's important to note that the purpose of the housing element is to have each city identify their housing needs and use local knowledge, using, yeah, using local knowledge, and then use that to develop programs and policies and identify sites to meet those needs. Meaningfully addressing community engagement input is essential to having a compliant housing element. With that, we would like to thank staff for its hard work on the housing element thus far, and to the mayor and council for your considerations of our comments. Thank you so much.
Paul, followed by Amy.
Yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. I'm speaking right now from Sacred Heart Church, and Sacred Heart Church was the hub of the Chicano Priest Organization headed by Father MacIntyre and Father Anthony Soto. And one of, in their minute orders, they talk about housing discrimination. So San Jose has not even yet come to a point where they have affirmed these histories that were fought right here at Sacred Heart Church on behalf of our people, because they knew what was happening to us, the segregation. I grew up in D-11. D-11 is the lowest designation on the redlining map. You can't get any lower than that. That is bottom of your horseshoe. I have that document. I read it, I study it, I get motivated by it. And the city needs to understand that there's a certain time when you practice humility, you sit down, you be quiet, and you listen. You just listen. We don't want to hear your policies anymore. Your policies got us into this situation in the first place. So you're not in any position to start telling us what we need to do or what you're going to do for us. You've already done that. You've already done that. I'd like to thank the three previous speakers, especially the homeboys from the unions, because when Poder de la Racion de la Raza Unida pushed that, when Model Cities came here and the Center for Performing Arts was going up, there was no mixed-op labor there. And they fought for that, and they got it, together with, and Salmo Canalaria of the black parades. So we need to understand that there is a legacy of that deprivation wages, and we need to start instituting it.
Amy, followed by Carlos Amaya.
Good evening, Mayor Mahan, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Amy Cody, and I'm a resident of the Moreland West Neighborhood located in the Westgate area of District 1. I'm calling to thank city staff for getting us in a position to meet our RENA obligations and step-up efforts to preserve, protect, and provide affordable housing in San Jose. Housing element updates are a big deal, and given our location, my neighbors and I have needed to follow the process in three cities. The Moreland West Neighborhood is located in San Jose and Campbell, and our local high school and shopping are in Saratoga. Together, San Jose and Saratoga expect construction of many new residential towers in the Westgate area. Local residents ask that the high-density residential development that's coming be accompanied by the best multi-jurisdictional planning possible. To accommodate five thousand new residents along Prospect Road and Saratoga Avenue, our cities must work together to realistically consider parking needs and adequately invest in transportation, transit, and traffic safety improvements, as well as parks, open space, and schools. Thank you.
Carlos Amaya, followed by Kylie Clark.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and members of the community. My name is Carlos Amaya, and I am a concerned citizen of the community. I am here to speak in favor of the memos put forth by councilmembers Ortiz and Torres, as well as Councilmember Jimenez. And just like to leave it at that. And also, just, I was listening earlier, I would just hope that there would be a little bit more of outreach to other members of the community, because I know that in speaking with other people, like in my neighborhood, I know that this is a topic that is not really well-known, and so it'd just be appreciated if there could be more of an outreach done to, especially for people like me, I live in affordable homes. So just, yeah, thank you.
Kylie, followed by Ally.
Good evening, my name is Kylie Clark, and I'm a member of the REAL Coalition and REALS Housing Justice Work Group. We're very grateful that we've been able to work with the city as you create your housing element. Like Emily said, and as you can see in the letter that we sent to council this morning, we are extremely concerned that in the absence of COPA, there are no anti-displacement strategies in the housing element to address this gap, and we request that you consider this and that you work to fill the gap. We're also concerned with the lack of detail in unhoused services, especially considering that San Jose has the fourth-largest unhoused population in the country. Housing and homelessness are inextricably linked, and it's imperative that homelessness be deeply and comprehensively addressed in the document that will serve as San Jose's housing plan for the next eight years. Specifically, now that San Jose will have no encampment zones, a form of criminalization of homelessness that's been proven to be harmful and counterproductive, we recommend the city include a plan in the housing element that ensures individuals whose encampments are swept have access to their belongings, including medication, and have a safe place to go when they lose their home. We would also note that we support the Cisepuete Collectives Letter to council, as well as the anti-displacement letter to HCD. This includes support for the two council memos on this item, one from Councilmember Jimenez and the other from councilmembers Ortiz and Torres. Thank you so much to staff for your work on the housing element thus far, and to the mayor, vice mayor, and council for your consideration of our comments. Take care.
Ally, followed by Isella.
Good evening, my name is Ally Saferman, and I'm here on behalf of the Housing Action Coalition and as a District 3 resident. For context, I've been working on housing elements across Santa Clara and San Mateo County and been working extremely closely with HCD. But that said, this housing element is not legally compliant and likely will not be approved by HCD for the following reasons. First, inaccurate methodology and false realistic capacities. I want to echo the comments of Commissioner Tordeos. He did a really great job laying out significant concerns on the realistic capacities, and then in my letter, I spoke quite a bit about the inadequate methodology for the site inventory. These are important, because if our numbers are inflated and sites aren't likely to be redeveloped, our RENA numbers will not, we will not hit our RENA targets. The buffers aren't big enough, and we do not see this as compliant. Additionally, in terms of programs and policies, we make a number of recommendations for ministerial development standards, improving urban village program, preservation programs, encouraging local hire, echoing our partners at the NorCal Carpenters. But above all, I am deeply concerned with the lack of public transparency that this housing element has said, has had. I'm specifically deeply concerned with the comment that the city tried to front-load feedback from the community ranging from 2019 to 2021. This was before a draft housing element was even produced. I've never seen a city act this way towards the public and not be receptive towards comments and allow for study sessions and additional engagement. And based off the comments that the city received, I really hope that the city takes time to respond to these comments and incorporate it for a better.
Isella, followed by Blair.
Good evening, my name is Isella Reyes with the Sacred Heart Community Service. I am a member of the Housing Justice Work Group as part of the nonprofit Racial Equity Action Leadership Coalition. Consistent with the letter that we sent to council this morning, we are very concerned that the COPA policy is not included as a possible strategy in the housing element and that there are no additional anti-displacement strategies to address the gap left when council failed to pass a COPA policy. We're also concerned the lack of details in several other strategies. For instance, we would like the city to coordinate with community organizations, especially those who serve historically redlined communities, as a way to AFFH. When implementing and outreach to the public on the Tenant Right to Council program, we also recommend that the community liaisons with lived experience be integrated into the program so that they help support tenants facing eviction. I would also like to note that we support the Cisepuete Collectives Letter to the council, as well as the Collectives and the Anti-Displacement Letter to HCD. This also includes support for the two council memos on this item, one from Councilmember Jimenez and the other from councilmembers Ortiz and Torres. Thank you to staff for its work on the housing element thus far, and to the mayor and council for your consideration of our comments.
Blair, followed by Pamela.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Really nice public comment, just a lot of variation and voices I haven't heard before. It's been nice today. I think they've offered some interesting, good advice for yourself. A couple of comments, public comments back. A person commented on questioning your reporting on how you're addressing the community and how that process is working. I've tried to learn really important lessons, you know, the work I do with tech accountability that, you know, and to deal with kind of the NIMBYism issues that we have to deal with, with housing so much, with affordable housing, with sites, encampment sites, you know, government-sponsored encampment sites, RV sites. I really hope that everything that we're working towards as a community process is towards a holistic process, and that we don't continue the process of just doing our community research in small, you know, isolated segments, and that we learn that, as we talk about issues of where to place future RV sites and such, it becomes, it may start at a neighborhood level, but we ask that neighborhood level to look around the city and talk to other parts of the city and learn how it can be, to really find the best spots. It sounds like you're talking about, you've got maps that show the best spots here you're talking about, that you've got a, you know, certain coordinates. Now, it's important to share that with the public and each neighborhood. So each neighborhood can get a sense, and we work together, work out this NIMBYism idea where things may not be good for this neighborhood, but can work over here, and it's letting neighborhoods help negotiate that out together. We've got to work towards that, and I hope that's the lessons we learned, and thanks for everyone's public comment today.
Pamela, followed by Justin.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. My name is Pamela Campos. I'm a resident of San Jose in District 2, and I want to voice my support of the memo submitted by Councilmember Jimenez. and I want to voice my support of the memo submitted by Councilmember Jimenez as well as the memo by Councilmembers Ortiz and Torres. I'm also in alignment with the letter submitted to council by the Real Coalition's Anti-Displacement Work Group and the Cisepueta Collective's letter to HCD. While I appreciate staff's work to carry out the housing element process and seek community public input, I don't agree that this current iteration of our housing element is a true reflection of the community-led solutions that many residents and community organizations work towards. The purpose of the housing element is to identify programs and policies that will help the city meet its RENA goals using local knowledge because as we know, those who are closest to the issues are closest to the solutions. The importance of the housing element and its impact to generate solutions for developing more housing at all levels of affordability, especially low-income and extremely low-income, is the city's most urgent issue to address. And if we want to achieve our mission of creating and sustaining safe, livable and vibrant communities for our diverse residents, we must center our solutions on their voices and lived experiences. When council failed to pass a COPA policy, its removal left a gap in our housing element that has not been addressed through additional anti-displacement strategies. This is highly concerning because addressing community needs and meaningfully incorporating residents' input is essential to a compliant housing element. The housing element should be a community-led document and this process is not true to the spirit of proactive community engagement and outreach to involve meaningful participation from residents of low socioeconomic status neighborhoods, communities of color, youth and working families. I request the City Council delay this vote and return the housing element draft to staff for additional review and to incorporate our community's feedback and input. Thank you for considering my comments.
Justin, followed by Ruthie.
Hello, my name is Justin Lardonwa. I'm the Vice Chair of the San Jose Planning Commission, but I'm speaking tonight as an individual. First, I want to thank staff for all their hard work. Right, compiling a housing element is a daunting undertaking, so thank you for that. I sent a letter last week expressing concerns about the process around this housing element draft. I don't feel that the Planning Commission or the City Councils had adequate time to review the draft. And while my concerns were about the process itself, I also echo what Commissioner Torrios raised in his letter and public comment about the content of the housing element. I recommend going forward with the recommendations from Councilmember Jimenez's memo, except that I think you should submit this draft to HCD as the draft rather than for approval. That will maintain your ability to make substantive changes to the housing element in response to the feedback from HCD. As it stands, I'm concerned about whether this draft can actually be approved and that submitting it for approval prematurely could further delay the process. I appreciate that Jimenez's memo calls for more public engagement. There have not been any public engagement meetings for the second draft. And I think that the city should codify what Jimenez is calling for as a requirement and then also codify requirements about timeline of publication before public hearings so that we're not in the situation again with either future drafts of this cycle or in future housing element cycles. Thank you.
Ruthie, followed by Mary Helen.
Good evening, my name is Ruth Callahan. I'm speaking out against the approval of ministerial right for infill in single-family neighborhoods and against any further infill development along Highway 85 and the adjacent neighborhoods. Our Cuiser Woods area was impacted greatly when the state eminent domain four single-family homes deep on each side of Branham Avenue to build Highway 85. We saw our neighbors' homes bulldozed, families displaced, students forced to move to other schools and areas of the city. Now, to engage in a social engineering experiment, the same housing department that is under a state audit because of the failure to end the encampments proposes to end single-family neighborhoods. If this element is approved, it will trigger a movement for a charter referendum to end this practice and to have all land use policies, the general plan 2040, the housing element, all approved by the voter and remove the city staff, including the council, from the decision-making process. All other eight cities in the county get to approve their general plan and housing development. The siting policy for 50% of development in District Nine and Ten is not equitable and is specifically called out for review in the state audit. Please vote no on this fail and previously rejected housing element. Thank you for this time, I appreciate.
Mary Helen, followed by Martha.
I'm Mary Helen Doherty, a resident of District Three and a member of Sacred Heart Housing Action Committee. Over the past few months, we've been communicating the need to implement new policies to prevent displacement and the trauma that comes from eviction. We believe the right to counsel is one of these policies that will ensure everyone facing an eviction hearing has a right to an attorney. Thank you to Councilmember Ortiz and Torres for their memo in support of the right to counsel that endorses the recommendation to issue an RFP to study the benefits of the right to counsel. We believe that the right to counsel will be a game-changer in keeping our community in staying in diverse dynamic and distinctive, keeping families together and making our city a place where everyone belongs. Thank you to the staff for all their work on this and please support the policies in the document. Thank you.
Martha, followed by Gabriel. Martha Bootsier.
Okay. Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers and Staff, I am Martha Bootsier, the co-president of the League of Women Voters for San Jose, Santa Clara. The League of Women Voters of San Jose, Santa Clara recommends that the City Council forward the housing element to the State Housing and Community Development Department for compliance review. The League has tracked the development of this plan from its beginning. We note that there are some serious deficiencies, but the implications of not submitting at this time outweigh those deficiencies. We would encourage the city to make every effort to address these in future updates to this plan, possibly during the annual review now required by law. We recognize that there will be continuing work to improve and major progress toward achieving the program metrics and goals. We recommend that a progress report is made public on a regular basis. Thank you so much for your service to the city of San Jose.
Gabriel, followed by S. Viet Home.
Hi, Gabrielle Hernandez, the Director of the Cisepueta Collective and also part of the Real Coalition. First, want to thank the Housing Department staff and we're going to miss Jackie and all the work that she's done. But again, it's not just about COPA. It's not about the attempted raid on the measure E funding. It's not about the local tenant preference policy that was in your last housing element eight years ago that we uplifted and finally got prioritized. You know, but again, our letters are clear and we tried to outline that you're not going to be able to ignore community in this housing element. So eliminate different pieces of it or trying to tell or not to tell HCD that you tried to raid funding for strategies around preservation. You know, they say, well, Gabrielle, if you hold up the process, you know, projects might not get done. Well, when you tried to raid the measure E money, affordable housing projects were at risk. Well, Gabrielle, they're going to be able to build without any, going through the Planning Commission and so on and so forth. Well, you know what? They build in our neighborhoods without any restriction. They don't have to go to the Planning Commission. Welcome to our neighborhood. Even the BART apologized for the historical things that they've done to our neighborhood, putting up 101 and, you know, the state and 680 and all these things, gassing our families. But again, only up to King Road, to the west of King Road because they're not willing to include developing our urban village that's right down the street from the other urban villages where they're going to develop out, think out and work with community with the new BART station coming in. So alls I can say is someone's going to listen to us. Alls we're going to continue to do is raise our voices, raise our community's voices.
S. Viet Home, followed by Jordan.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Mahan, Vice Mayor Kamay and members of the City Council. Matthew Reed, Director of Policy at Silicon Valley at Home. We've been an active participant in the housing element process up to date in San Jose and we are supportive of the draft housing element before you this evening. It's not perfect, but we're here to support the work. We really want to thank staff for the tremendous amount of work over the last couple of years. We do believe that there's still work to be done to refine language. As Ms. Crado described, in the coming days, we'll be submitting proposed edits, which we see as non-substantive edits, to clarify and strengthen programs. We support the edits proposed by Councilmembers Ortiz and Torres. We appreciate Councilmember Jimenez's desire to lean into this process, which has not been super accessible with this council. The six-cycle housing element is required to create a plan to meet a full range of housing needs residents in San Jose, to protect vulnerable residents, preserve existing affordable homes and remove constraints on housing development. Given the critical nature of the housing element, the bar is very high. We cannot say with confidence that what is before you is going to make it through the state clearance, but we have been reassured, I believe that you have, by your staff that there has been constant communication. Couple of quick thoughts. We do agree that there is a weakness stemming from COPA's removal. This places more emphasis on the importance of remaining preservation strategies and we have supported concerns raised by the Cisepueta Collective and the Real Coalition. There are some really important thoughtful pieces in here, but it's going to take your support to make sure it can be done efficiently by your staff.
Jordan.
Yes, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Council. My name is Jordan Grimes. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Green Belt Alliance. As detailed in our joint letter with the Housing Action Coalition, we have serious concerns about the draft, particularly related to the site inventory methodology around realistic capacity calculations as well as inadequate analysis of constraints on housing development, particularly in regard to zoning, construction costs and the relation of city policies to them. Moreover, we join the Real Coalition in concerns regarding the lack of tenant protections provided with the removal of COPA and urge council to identify and commit to new protections in order to satisfy requirements to affirmatively further fair housing. And finally, the lack of community input and local knowledge on the housing need on the ground is apparent and unfortunately deficient, and more must be done to ensure it is sufficient. San Jose must make real commitments to ensure badly-needed infill housing is built throughout the city. Thus far, the element does not present an effective vision or policies for realizing those needs. We appreciate the work of council and staff thus far while acknowledging that there is still considerable work ahead of us. We look forward to joining you collaboratively in that work. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Back to council.
Thank you, Tony, and thank you to everybody who weighed in. Come back to council deliberation now. We will start with Vice Mayor Kamay.
I didn't know it was going to be first. I just want to thank staff. I know that this has been a huge, huge effort over a long period of time. So I want to thank everyone who worked on this and I saw all of the meetings and everything that you went out to do. So thank you so much for that. I will say that there are a few things that were not clear to me, even though, you know, I thank you for giving me a council briefing and, you know, answered questions at that time. I guess, you know, I see the housing element as one of the most important documents, policy documents, that we have and it's with us for the next eight years, right? So I see it as a document of critical importance from a policy point of view. I was just wondering a few things and perhaps you could respond to them. I see the Chapter Three, the Housing Goals and Strategy, really as a work plan for the next few years. And I know that you have your short-term, long-term and what's ongoing all the time. But, you know, I was very, very curious as to your strategies and milestones. Whenever I think about strategies and milestones on implementation, I think about what, by when, how much and who and where, right? That is clearly identified. So I think that it would be stronger if that was answered in your milestones area because there is a lot of good, there are many really good strategies that do not have, well, when is it going to be? Who's going to do it? How is it going to happen? And so there's sort of like throughout the implementation section on Chapter Three, I just think it could be stronger if you did identify that, if you were more specific. And I think that it would also be clear as to what are we committing to? Because right now, there are many years and, you know, just sort of some without anything very much on there. And, you know, I mean, one thing would be, you know, like neighborhood outreach and education on homeless housing and other housing topics. And it just says materials prepared, CBO under contract, feedback sessions held. And to me, that's very, like, very vague. So I think the more specific, it would be helpful to know, okay, well, what is really going to happen? How is it going to happen? By when is it going to happen and who's going to do it? So I just, I just feel that that whole section on implementation could be much richer and stronger if you did answer those questions. So that's just something to think about. I also would like to say that in the resolution under Item 10, where you talk about non-substantive changes, I want to define that as clerical changes or very minor corrections. Anything beyond very minor corrections or clerical changes starts to sort of weave into the substantive, right? So I just want it to be defined very clearly on that. And I also would like to know on the constraints, and this is something that I know we've been experiencing for the last few years, why was staffing or vacancies not part of a constraint? Because it is a constraint. I mean, we've heard over the last few months how it's been very difficult, you know, in terms of process, in terms of hiring, in terms of even contractors or competing for contractors in the workplace. So I see that as a constraint. So I just am asking. Why was that not seen as a constraint?
Yeah, I mean, I think, well, I think we were looking at it more sort of longer term over the last previous housing element. Staffing has been a constraint. It's been, I think, a much more recent constraint. For example, my staff team lost 40% of its staff in a month, two, a couple of months. But I think we were looking at sort of the longer-term picture and not sort of a snapshot of where the staffing situation is in time. We are in the process, we should be almost fully staffed with one, exception of one position in the coming months. So I think we're, I think that we feel confident we're able to address that situation and be able to plow forward implementing the housing, implement the housing element.
Yeah, I think that's great. However, I think that the trend, as I see it, for some reason, planners are very hard to find. And I know that over the last few years, there's been sort of a trend going in different directions and not into the planning area. I mean, I do know that there are a lot of transportation planners, but not sort of general planners. And so I think over the next few years, I don't see it changing very much and we'll be lucky if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I mean, fair enough. I think that we don't have a challenge finding great planners as our current recruitment is showing. I think the challenge, just maybe the conversation for another day, is about retaining the people that we have and there's a lot of reasons for that, but I think that's a topic for another day.
Can you, can you speak to the lack of specificity in the implementation plan?
Hi, Vice Mayor. Yes, I can speak to that at Kristen Clements, Acting Deputy in Housing. The state's requirements are different for different types of strategies as to how much we need to identify, not just the metric by which we would know if we had accomplished something, but also the targets. The ones that are affiliated with production and preservation are the ones that the state requires us to set targets on. And so we had to name, for instance, how much And so we had to name, for instance, how much we would anticipate putting out in a preservation NOFA, and how many units that might get. So there were certain ones we had to establish targets. Other ones were a little harder to measure. You cited the outreach one. And, you know, I think that's a good example of, we'll be doing outreach. We could have added more potentially, you know, like numbers of meetings held, numbers of people reached. And all of this, because it's so systems oriented, difficult to gauge by, you know, outcomes rather than outputs. So the who would be doing it, the departments are named. And that's all that the requirements were, were to name the departments involved. You know, we have teams identified for each piece of the work. So that's part of our work plan this year, is actually to look at the short-term strategies that we need to start and get done, assign them to our teams in the housing department, have the policy team kind of facilitate that work. So overall, you know, this is not a perfect document, and we could add detail ongoing. But I think at some point, we need to stop and say, can we get this done?
And let me just add, Jackie, Housing Director for the city. And what I would say is, one of the goals that we'd like to do with the housing element is to take some of those areas where you're right. Perhaps we didn't provide as much detail and dates and times. We have high-level goals. And we're going to be working with the Housing Catalyst Team to actually develop a more refined work plan that will then allow us to achieve the results that you're looking for.
Thank you for that. And lastly, before my time ends, I just want to say that I understand the urgency in which you want to do this, and you've been working for this for a long time. But I will say that I agree with Councilmember Jimenez on his recommendation, one and two, that if it does not get certified, that it should come back to us, because it would tell us a lot more should HCD decide, no, we're not going to certify, we're not going to do this, we're not going to certify. So I think that it should come back to us.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Let's go to Councilwoman Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you. I'll just start by just saying that I think, I think we're all rowing in the same direction. I think that some of that probably gets lost in just all the questions and things of that nature. And so I think it's just very important to keep that in mind. Because I ask my questions just simply to get clarity. And we put out the memo, obviously, in conjunction with my team and some of the conversations they've had with you all and different capacities they have and things that we've seen. And so that's really just wanted to frame sort of the reason I'm asking some of these questions. The first thing I want to ask is, what happens if it's not certified? Can you take me through sort of what, how that plays out?
Yeah, I could start to answer that. So as we, if the council votes to approve, we'll submit to the state. If the state has further comments, it's possible that they would, you know, in their final review with the top-level reviewers, Melinda McCoy apparently is our top-level reviewer, she may have a couple of items that her staff did not address already with us. There might be a couple of things to address left. But I think the point is that we are very close to something that is able to be certified. And so it's not a question of whether, it's just a question of when and what the process is to get there. We have pretty high confidence that we have been extremely responsive to everything staff has told us. So we're feeling good sending this back in, and our HCD staffer does understand where we are in terms of, you know, not having gotten the sign-off they had hoped that they could give us with a thumbs up by the end of this fiscal year, because their staff workload increased dramatically. They're still working on four different jurisdictions, four regions.
Thank you. They, by statute, have 60 days to respond, right?
They have 60 days to respond.
But they can respond in 30, they can respond in 40.
That's right.
Yeah, and so we, when do you, assuming this is approved tonight, which I suspect it will, I think we all want to send it along, when would it be submitted? When does that clock start? Is it?
Our intention is to submit by the end of June. And then if it's 60 days from that, it would be by late August.
End of August, early September.
We would hope to hear, yeah. Yeah, they have to, they have to meet their deadlines.
And so, and so one possibility is they'll say, hey, good job, everything's in there, certified, ready to go, put a bow on it. The other scenario is make some of these, make some changes, right? Now, with regard to the changes, what, because I have trouble with this word substantive, sort of. Can you help me understand, and anyone, actually, just what your thoughts are around what substantial, what's a substantial change, what isn't, you know?
So a lot of the comments that we've received thus far, and if we are receiving future comments, which we may, where we anticipate they'd be like this, please explain this. Provide additional explanation on your methodology or clarify this. It's more, you know, clarification, additional explanation type of things. We did go on a tour. So Chelsea, our reviewer, was in town from Sacramento and said to us, hey, I really want to go on a tour. Let's go on a tour of San Jose, I'll be here tomorrow, do you want to do it? And we said, sure. So we hopped in a van, Josh's van, actually, and we drove around the city for about four hours. And we talked through a lot of stuff. And as we talked to her, it became clear that she didn't really, I mean, San Jose has a pretty, I'll use the word robust and unique sometimes, policy framework. And she didn't fully understand that, especially the urban village framework. And we explained it to her, she says, oh, now I get it. So those are the kind of things where you might get comments, hey, it's important that you explain this further. How did you get here? So that's really a lot, the bulk of the comments that we've got, and we would define as non-substantive. We're not changing policies and programs in a radical direction. We may be clarifying a milestone, finding, you know, further analysis, that type of thing.
Okay, and then, and then let's just say there are some, they say, hey, you still need additional work, non-substantive sort of changes need to be made. How would the, at that point, assuming you go make those changes, does it come back to us again for approval?
Well, based on, what is it, in the resolution, Section 10, it would not, unless we're making what we call substantive changes to the document, we're adding new programs, new policies, really significantly changing the course or direction on that, then we would have to, we're obligated to bring it back to council. But if it's just kind of that sort of, again, additional analysis, clarification, that sort of thing, then the idea is we would go back and forth, continue to work with them as we're doing now, and button up the document, address their final comments. And then they would, what they would do is they would send us, they would then let us know that we're good, and they would send us a certification after that point.
Okay, and then one thing I found about this topic is, you're going to laugh when I say, I think you'll laugh when I say, is that everyone has an opinion about what should be in there. A lot of different groups in the community want this, want that. My office, I'm sure you've heard, we think this and that, obviously, we have a memo. How do you decide what to incorporate and what not to incorporate? Is there anything, I guess, to me, it all seems like, oh, these are all great ideas. Why not include them all, to the extent possible, and check every box that exists rather than not including it, than being said, hey, why didn't you include that? Like, what's, is there a detriment to including some of this stuff that seems reasonable on its face?
Take a stab at that, and maybe my colleagues can join in. On the policies and program side, even though this is a really ambitious document, we had to be careful about winnowing out some of the items that we didn't think would be impactful enough for the time we would have to spend doing them. So staff actually did an internal rating and ranking exercise, where we figured out which ones we thought most furthered fair housing, most made impact, and then judged the level of effort. And so there were some items through that process with the average scoring that just kind of dropped below the line. We just didn't think we'd have resources to do everything we'd like to do. And then the other piece of that, the analysis of the sites inventory, I just want to say that the state is extremely specific about what they want to see and how they want to see it in general. The methodology by which we identified the inventory was based on our own knowledge. And as Michael said, really, the exercise has been showing our work. And so it may be a different methodology than another community, that's fine. The point is, is it clear enough that the HCD reviewers can understand? And so to us at this point, we've, we've heard so much input from the community, and we understand people's priorities. And at this point, kind of what we're deciding to, you know, change or move on really is about how do we get certified? What is the state telling us we must do?
Okay, and I've heard stories of, say, other jurisdictions having organizations, groups chiming in, giving feedback, and other jurisdictions where it seems like HCD was, they heard those, and they're like, hey, yeah, that's a good point, why didn't you do this, city? Do, how are we making certain that we don't encounter that here, right? That some of these groups aren't lifting up something that's important and we're not catching? But then HCD is going to say, hey, what they said actually makes sense, why wouldn't you incorporate?
You know, we had a couple dozen letters through the first draft that were submitted. HCD does review all those letters. We had to make sure that, actually, both of us had all of the letters, because neither, neither us nor the state had actually received every letter. So we all shared information. Our reviewer did pick out a handful of items that she thought, you know, this one would be very impactful from a fair housing perspective. You should accelerate that into the first part of the cycle, as an example. She noted that several groups had expressed an interest in anti-displacement. So she supported the items that were in there and said, you may want to make them a little bit more specific or whatever. So she has already identified things that, based on public feedback, that she agreed with, and we've adjusted and incorporated appropriately.
Okay, so assuming this is approved today, you send it out to HCD at the end of this month. Does that, whether, and we send it off, they have 60 days, but does that essentially pause the builder's remedy? Does that hit pause on the button? Hit pause and not allow any of these to go through, or how does that function?
Well, so once the council, if the council passes a resolution that finds that our housing element is in substantial compliance, yes, that would close the window.
So that window closes while they're reviewing it during these 60 days?
Correct.
And then, let's just say they come back with non-substantive changes, it opens back up? No?
Unless, no, because we'd still, it's more sort of tweaking, final revisions, or additional analysis. If they came back and said, you're, you know, if you're substantially not in compliance, then I think, you know, there could be an issue there. But what we're anticipating, because of the dialogue we've had, is it's more just back and forth with that sort of minor, can you explain this better? I don't quite understand this. Can you add some more meat on the milestone kind of thing?
Okay, all right. And my very last question?
I just wanted to actually clarify one thing, because I'm not sure the staff actually said it, was, because you mentioned, you know, why didn't you just throw everything in there? And one of the reasons we're not throwing everything in there is because the housing element is something that the state takes very seriously. And so we are obligated to work on the items that are on the plan. And so we don't want to throw everything in there and not have an achievable work plan that then the state can say, San Jose, you did not, you know, make progress on the majority of these items. So it's really important. We're thoughtful, and we select items that we're, you know, we believe we can move forward on.
Okay, I have other questions, but I'm out of time. I'll stop talking, but thank you for the answers.
Thanks, council member. We can slowly circle back to you. Okay, let's go on to Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I also just want to start out by thanking staff for your very tireless hours working on this. And congratulations for seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. I'm excited to see the robust plan that will further the city's housing goals, especially in the field of fair housing. And to that end, Councilmember Torres and I, we've wanted to introduce language for a program we believe can make a big difference for the habitability of our, of our city's tenants, especially our working-class neighborhoods, which was the Community-Based Code Enforcement Program, which I know currently exists in San Francisco. I think that could build a partnership between tenants, city staff, grassroots community partners. And I know that our staff in general, but especially our code enforcement staff, is really strained when it comes to capacity, and many other families need more immediate solutions, especially those who live in three, five, and seven, and other working-class pockets of the city. And I know, we saw the suggestions from staff, and I'm happy to modify the language to explore. Definitely don't want to put unfunded direction on staff. Councilmember Torres and I also just suggested a minor language change for the Right to Counsel program. We think it's great to have a housing collaborative and a right to counsel. We just don't want it to be either and or. So we appreciate your acceptance of that. And then I wanted to add some strong public outreach language for the Alum Rock East Urban Village Plan, which is going to be presented, was going to be organized soon. Also, I do have a few questions before I make a motion for our memo. And I'm just, I know you guys have worked a lot, really hard on this. So I'm asking more of just like, because obviously some things were mentioned in public comments, so just for the record, and so, I may already have the answers for some of these. But can you talk a little bit about specific public outreach? I guess, like for our, what did public outreach look like for this plan when it came to our immigrant community, our tenants, and other working-class populations?
Yes, thank you, council member. You know, to the extent that this plan incorporates items that were taken from the anti-displacement strategy, that as an example was work that involved deep community listening for a couple of years, together with Somos Mayfair and people that they assembled, the CICPO collective. And so we feel like the outreach for the housing element really reflects some of the items and the outreach that it took to get them into those plans. We can go through, Chapter One kind of summarizes our outreach to the community. We tried hard to actually outreach to the Vietnamese-speaking community. We tabled at the Moon Festival. We coordinated Vietnamese sessions specifically for that population. Unfortunately, we just had low attendance at these items. But, you know, we regularly, I mean, there's a whole plan for how we did language-sensitive outreach. We did regular e-blasts, we made sure that people, we had Spanish translation at every meeting, and then tried to make sure that everyone understood how to request other languages if necessary. We used social media, and we did that in multiple languages. The Planning Buildings Communications Team was working on that. So, you know, I think there are probably 20 answers to your question. I'm not sure if I hit all of the best ones, but we tried to be, you know, very language-sensitive and language-conscious, and really do kind of widespread outreach through surveys and then, you know, meeting announcements.
I appreciate that. And like, I saw you out there working, I just wanted to make sure for the record that we highlighted some of the outreach strategies. In regards to, and I heard this in one of the public comments, that this, the housing element lacks anti-displacement policies. Could you speak to why this was asked? And are we, is this a true assertion?
Well, I just went through our anti-displacement strategy summary that we had created for that plan. And I think I count about 10 items that are in the housing element that are right from the anti-displacement strategy that staff has not yet completed. And so we pulled those in. I do think, obviously, you heard, for a lot of organizations, COPA's elimination was very heartfelt and devastating. And frankly, some of the comments on, there's nothing to take its place. It's kind of a unique program to try to build, you know, an ecosystem of developers and also try to, you know, kind of on a widespread basis, see more volume to keep people in place. You know, the Preservation NOFA is the next second-most powerful preservation item. And again, everything that we know about anti-displacement strategies, it's really kind of a combination of different efforts. No, like, one big program necessarily, but a combination of many different things in many different ways, such as more proactive code enforcement, more community outreach about code enforcement. You know, it is, it is lots of small strategies that typically make up a good anti-displacement program.
I appreciate that. And then finally, I know that we have, you know, some of the brothers from NorCal Carpenters, they had questions in regards to the absence of labor standards in the housing element. First, I mean, I guess the first question is, are labor standards within the housing element enforceable? And then, two, was there any thought to this when you guys were developing it?
Jared Ferguson with Planning Building and Code Enforcement. We did have some conversations with, you know, the carpenters over development and talked about some of their language. You know, we took a look at our, the city, you know, has existing programs and policies in place to support workforce. Work to Future has an existing program with building trades. We have the city's prevailing wage requirement on public works, certain public works projects. We have our city's project labor, project labor agreement. And also, you know, our continued work on the wage theft. And also, you know, our continued work on the Wage Theft Ordinance. And also, you know, as we look to implement recent state legislation like AB 2011 and SB 6, those also have labor standards in them as well that we'll be, we'll be, you know, looking to enforce. And so we felt like that those combination of things as existing policies and programs really, you know, kind of went to, to address some of those comments that they, they had.
Okay, great. The, the second question, though, is labor standard included in housing element, is that enforceable? Or is that just, yeah, just would like to have some context?
If we had included a program or a policy initiative, it would be enforceable to the extent that council approves something that had, you know, enforcement teeth to it. The language that Redwood City used, which was widely touted by carpenters' representatives, actually at all kinds of city meetings that I've heard, was really more about making marriages, about local trades and developers. And so kind of making a best case, best effort to promote local hire. So more of an initiative than a policy, per se. That's my understanding of it.
Okay. All right. And we're just not at a place where we could look at local hire, I guess, or?
To me, that was a broader conversation with the city council and kind of ran outside of the purview of what just the housing element was, which is how to increase housing choices, especially for protected-class residents. There is some wealth-building pieces to that, but again, it's for protected-class residents. It's not just in general. So I felt like I personally was sympathetic to their requests and felt like it was just a little bit out, a little bit tangential to what we needed to put in here, but that we certainly do so much work consistent with what they're saying. I'll say one other quick thing. State legislation such as AB 2011 that was passed last year and other bills also have kind of labor conditions and requirements embedded in them. And so, you know, to the extent those are used in San Jose, we'll also be, you know, checking that those conditions are being met as well. We won't be enforcing, per se, but we'll be facilitating and making sure people understand kind of locally how to, you know, how you'd meet that.
Okay. And I believe we were gonna, may not be in the housing element, but I think, I was talking to some staff, they said we were going to be looking at local hire as a, as a concept later on, on the year. So, okay. Thank you so much for answering my questions. Like I mentioned, some of them I already knew, but I think it's great to have that on the record. I'd now like to move the motion for approval, as well as the memo from myself and Councilmember Torres. And I know Councilmember Jimenez, you're still asking questions, but I'll, we'll keep an open mind to if you, if you come to any sort of suggestions.
Second.
With substitution to accept solely staff recommendation.
Councilmember, why don't you wait until I call on you to make a substitute motion? Okay. We're gonna go, now, we have a couple hands up. We're gonna go to Councilmember Batra, and then we have Councilmember Duane.
Thank you very much for this comprehensive document covering a whole bunch of stuff. And you have covered a lot in the summary. Two areas I'd like you to comment. One, I've been concerned about all the, all the efforts we are making in terms of affordable homes and low-income homes and all that. Highlight some of the things which you are doing in this housing element which will prevent segregation happening, okay? Because that is, you know, with all the good intentions, we do not want to end up having low-income towers or low-income neighborhoods, and then those people don't get any good facilities, no good stores, no good grocery stores and all that, so the, so we don't want to create that, our old segregated society again. So please highlight some of the things which you're doing to prevent that happening.
Thank you, council member. You're right, segregation is at that highest level of how do we really tear it down and address it? The items, really building housing and, and affordable housing in places it hasn't really been before, actually would bring in a population that is going to diversify those local neighborhoods potentially. We have very specific patterns of race and ethnicity. I think you've seen our dot maps before. And so I think the more places that we build housing that maybe hasn't seen housing building, you know, in the recent past, I think that will naturally start to change patterns of where race and ethnicities are prevalent. Josh, do you have other thoughts? Please, Josh. We would like to have Josh speak to this. Josh Shimatsu, who really led our assessment of fair housing analysis and work, very important.
So, I mean, you know, a couple more things in terms of, in terms of that, you know, we're, we're looking to work more with the county about, about voucher, vouchers and where, you know, maybe to have some incentives for vouchers to be used, you know, across, across the city, including, you know, high, you know, so-called higher resource neighborhoods. And, and then also to, you know, one of the, one of the things that Ruth mentioned in her slide presentation, one of the analyses that we have to do is to look at, you know, where the, in the site inventory, where the various sites are for, for, you know, that we're projecting that have capacity for affordable housing. And, you know, as Ruth put up in the slide, you know, 85% of the, 85% of the sites in the site inventory for affordable housing are in medium and high resource neighborhoods per the state's opportunity maps.
Any, any efforts on making mixed-income housing?
Yes, there is one on, in here on mixed-income housing specifically, and there are products out there that can help with that. Cali HFA has a good product. And so, yes, that is, that is one of them.
See, our models of financing and all that, they're not going to be barriers to creating mixed-income housing.
I think the more flexible local sources have more flexibility on the income ranges that we can serve. Our old redevelopment dollars, our program income, very specific, very strict. So I think blending sources can help achieve kind of a broader array of incomes served in properties like that.
So the second item, segregation was one. The second was finding ways to accelerate production by improving our permitting processes, our planning processes, our pre-sequo and all that. Any of those are now part of our commitment in, as a part of the housing element. If you could highlight a couple of them, would make a lot of people at ease.
Thank you, council member. One item that we, we have in here and we discuss that we've already been doing is this creation of the Housing Catalyst Team. It's an interdepartmental team with housing, planning, parks, Office of Economic Development. And again, it's so that the internal folks are talking to each other, and we're identifying how we can facilitate the production of both market rate and affordable housing. We have a program, I'm forgetting the, P7, City Ministerial Infill Approval Ordinance, so that's a streamlined ordinance that we're looking to model similar to what we see with SB 35 streamlined projects. So that's, that's one that we think can help streamline housing projects, and it won't be, I mean, so far, the way we're sort of providing the flexibility right now is that it doesn't have to be 100% affordable. That's what's required under SB 35, so we're trying to open that possibility for products, projects that are not just 100% affordable.
Okay. And so we are committed to P7, that we are going to do it?
Yes. The language in here is to adopt an ordinance, adopt and implement that ordinance.
Thank you. That's excellent. Okay? And so just, so those are the two main items I was concerned about, while you're concerned about millions of them in there. So good job addressing every one of those. And hopefully, those things are going to produce all the housing commitments you are making in this housing plan element. So good luck with that.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Duane?
I'd just like to make a motion for substitution, just for solely staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay. We have a substitute motion on the floor for the staff recommendation. Thank you. Councilmember Torres?
Yeah, the, the substitute motion kind of threw me off, but just wanted to, wanted to say huge, but we have them here on this dais, of course. I just wanted to say thank you to, to staff. I, you know, this, you know, the, the work that you all have been doing is incredibly important because it's hopefully gonna right the wrong of our city, right, for the past 100 years, 50 years, 60 years, I don't know, Dutch Hammond era, I guess. And so, and I just want to give a quick shout-out to Ruth. So congratulations on your promotion. Saw it on, I saw it on LinkedIn. And I know that there's a, there's a substitute motion now on the floor, but I do hope that my colleagues do support the memo that myself and Councilmember Ortiz wrote. You know, we were intentional in our language, especially when it comes to tenant protections, but also the community-based code enforcement, but along with robust community outreach when it comes to the development of urban villages, right? We do not want to see our, our community continue to be displaced when it comes to, to urban villages, or our small businesses as well. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, council member. And congratulations to Ruth. Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, I just want to take a moment to thank all of you who have worked on this for so many years and for, and so hard. And I, I know it must be exceptionally difficult under the circumstances that are, of the scrutiny that's on this process, because there's hundreds and hundreds of voices who all are chiming in throughout and making, I'm sure, it much harder for you to continue to move forward. And so I appreciate that we're at this point. I think it's really important that we move the process forward, see how the state, the state responds, and not assume, and heading into the process, that this is already a failure and that, you know, and that we have to make some more changes and delay the process even further. So I appreciate that. I want to ask just one question about potential next step, if in fact, we find that there is a substantive. I mean, we, you know, there were a lot of questions about what substantive, what's not, right? And what it mean, if there's, you know, I fully understand if there's non, non-substantive changes, they're asking for clarification or a little bit more detail or history or something like that, or, or, you know, clerical type of changes, not coming back to council makes sense. You know, I know we went through this conversation at the end of last year at a Rules Committee meeting, asking for a study session so that we were all on board and understood this. I still believe that would have been helpful, and I think we're seeing now the, the result to the fact that people feel like there was, there was a process skipped or people were left out. And while I appreciate the difficulty and the challenging spot you were in, I think we may have gotten past some of that if we had just held, you know, a little bit more of a group discussion earlier in the process. So I do like the idea that at a certain, if there are substantive, any substantive changes, that we have a chance as a council to hear about them and discuss them before, at the next step of the process. So I would like that to be part of the next step of the process. I'm very hopeful, like you are, that that won't be necessary, that we're going to get our certification with some maybe minor changes and move on. But I would like some, some feeling that we will then come back and have a conversation if necessary.
Yeah, I think one approach, Councilmember Cohen, that might address your desire is that once we've gotten the comments from HCD, what we can do is we could write an informational memo to council explaining what those comments are, how we've addressed them, and then it would be really up to council to decide, hey, we, you know, we think this needs to come back for further discussion or not. But I think that, that would be an approach, I think, that could sort of keep us moving forward, but provide the opportunity, at least the understanding, council has a good understanding of what's happened since they approved it, and then could take an action that they think is appropriate based on what we've heard back from HCD. So it would be a Rules Committee discussion at that point to decide. I mean, I, I mean, again, when you say have council decide, we have to have a process for that, and, you know, we'd have to either agendize having a discussion here or have a conversation at Rules about, does this warrant scheduling something, I think that makes sense.
Councilmember Cohen Roslin, who, if I could just interject just for a moment here, certainly staff is committed to share the comments that we get back from HCD. I, I do want to remind the mayor and the council that for the last nine months, this staff has been working very, very closely with HCD staff. We would be totally surprised if we got comments back that were substantive in nature, that would cause us to have to come back to the council. But understand that, you know, that chance is out there. To Michael's point, I think we'll be glad to issue an info memo, sharing the comments that we do get back from HCD, and expressing that, as we assume they're going to be non-substantial, and so that we can continue the process and get our housing element certified.
And, and I fully support your expectation. Don't have any reason to disbelieve it, and I'm not suggesting anything otherwise. I think we have to be prepared as a council, just in the, in case. I mean, we're hearing from a lot of people who are convinced this isn't going to be certified. There are substantial issues. I don't necessarily buy that. I very much trust the folks who are sitting, the nine of you who are sitting there. Maybe Lee shouldn't be lumped in with you. So eight of you that are sitting there. And, and believe that you have done your diligence, that, that you are, you know, I, I really do want this to be, you to be right, and I, and I think you're likely to be, but I just want to be prepared just in case. That's all. That's all I'm suggesting. Having said that, also, I want to, I want to really appreciate my colleagues, Councilmembers Ortiz and Torres, for their memo, for their thoughtful work, for doing their homework. I mean, I could tell as Councilmember Ortiz introduced it, he, he understood what he was talking about. He understood the ramifications, I'm sure, his, his memo mate, Councilmember Torres, did as well. And, and I, you know, I appreciate the staff agrees with their recommendations, or at least is not opposed to including them. I will hold out to, you know, for the second underlying motion to support the memo, and just look forward to wrapping this up tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Foley?
Thank you. Just briefly, thank you for the presentation and all of the work that the whole team has spent putting the housing element together and presenting it to the various outreach efforts that you had over those many months and here, probably. So I just want to be grateful and thank you for all of that. I also want to acknowledge that this is Jackie's last council meeting and her last presentation, and so I wish you...
Next one.
Well, I'm gonna do it right now, because I have the floor, and I guess the mayor's gonna do it again, but I just want to wish you the best in retirement.
All good, council member. We can definitely do it twice. And were you done?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Yep. Councilmember Jimenez?
Sorry. I was arguing with Councilmember Cohen over here. I just, my apologies. I'm kidding. It's late, so I'm gonna be super brief. So I was just telling them that I appreciated his comments. I think there's a way to get both speed, which I get the sense staff desires, and get a chance to, to look at, you know, the, the plan if it gets rejected or there's substantive comments from HCD. And I think a way to do that, and I, and I, and I do think that it would have to go through Rules, but I don't think there's an issue with us agendizing something, going to Rules, agendizing something sometime, sometime in mid-August or so, as a placeholder, if you will. If it gets approved, wonderful. That's the end of it. If it doesn't get approved, we can theoretically have a very quick meeting, talk about it, this is what it was, wasn't substantive, and then we, we move along. And so I guess I don't, I don't, I think what was cited at the beginning of the conversation or the presentation was a two-month delay, and I think there's ways around that. I think that's what was cited. I don't know.
I'm sorry, just a clarification, because I think what we're, what we're suggesting is we would write up, Councilmember outlines, comments we've received, how we're gonna address them, that would then go to Rules and then, but you're saying, when we said there's a two-month delay, it would be a two-month delay if, if there is a full-blown study session. I think you're not saying that.
Correct, correct. So, so I was sitting here going through some of the language in the memo that I drafted, is that I, I don't think we need a study session, I guess is my point. It could just theoretically be something scheduled for mid-August, assuming we have the response by then. I'm just throwing this out there, right? It doesn't need to be exactly this.
I would say we don't really need that. I mean, we're, we're thinking about, like...
I mean, we're thinking about, like, not having additional work. So if, because I'm just, so if we were to get something that's going to, that is substantive, we have to come back. There's no choice on the staff side. So we would have to drop a memo. So not having something that, you know, that's predefined, I think, is not helpful because the comment could come back in 30 days and we're going to jump and do whatever we need to do. So I think we just need to be patient, get the comments back, and either they're subs, if they are not substantive, then the staff will issue the info memo and they will continue to work and complete the process. If they are substantive and have a policy or programmatic changes, we have to come back. So the staff will have to place it back on the agenda for your reviews.
And if we come back, we, at that point, just to be absolutely clear, we have reopened builder's remedy. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That was my understanding.
Well, so I think the assumption would be that builder's remedy would be open for that period until we can definitively say that we're in substantial.
I thought I asked that question, and the answer was no.
Well, that's if it's non-substantive changes and it's accepted. But if it's a substantive change that requires us to come back, re-debate, vote again, we are now resetting the clock on builder's remedy.
So help me understand, when HCD responds, however they may respond, do they define whether their response is substantive or not? Or that's an interpretation that you all make?
No, they're not going to say this is not substantive. It's just make some tweaks. They're going to say, I counted, and something about, you know, do you have capacity to do all of this in the short term? You know, do you want to refine, like, by moving something out a couple of months to get into long term? I have a feeling they're going to do just advising, saying, oh, I'd like a little, a couple more sentences to justify which items were AFFH items, and a couple more metrics, therefore, on a couple more. I don't, I don't think it's, they're going to not say substantive or substantive or not. It's our decisions, really, as to what is.
All right, Kristin, but I think the question is, how will we know? If it's not, if I understand you correctly, how will we know that they're blowing it up and saying, you need more work, this has to be reviewed?
What's that threshold?
They're not going to say that.
In your mind, in...
Well, I mean, I think Johnny should come down and address this comment, but yeah. But yeah, so I mean, they'll send us a letter saying what the comments are, and we'll go through them, and we'll share them with council. And again, if, as Jackie said, if, I mean, to some extent, I realize there's a little bit of a gray area. Some person, what's one person's substantive is another person's technical change. And ultimately, you know, the council will see what we're being asked to do, and they could provide a different direction and say that's substantive or not.
And I'll just say, before you answer, Johnny, my concern is this, very simply, is that you all have been doing the work. I appreciate that. I recognize that. I'm concerned that you're going to, that you all are going to say this is non-substantive, but we would otherwise say, ah, we actually think that's substantive. And how do we make that distinction? Because I feel like, I can't help but feel that we're not...
Yeah, but a distinction that the staff is making is that non-substantive changes are, you need to add a period here, you need to provide a little more explanation on something. While substantive changes, that you have not met the requirements of fair housing under the housing element, and you need to add additional policies in order to meet that requirement.
Okay. And so would you consider a substantive change to be, they say, hey, we've heard from X groups, they bring up a good point, you need to add this section. Is that substantive? Non-substantive? I mean, I guess it depends on what it is.
If they're saying add a section of programs or add a section of policies in order to meet a X, like, furthering fair housing, that would be a substantive change.
Okay, let's hear from the attorney.
Please.
So in order to have a 100% legally defensible housing element, it's a two-step process. The first step is for the city council to adopt a resolution today to say that we believe we have a housing element that is in complying with state law. Check.
Right.
And after the action of council today, we believe we have closed the door on any builder's remedy application at this point. The second step in the process is to go to HCD to get certification from HCD, which is a second step in the process. HCD may disagree with the council's finding today, at which point we will go through the process to make sure that HCD is satisfied with the housing element. Our position is, once you take action today, that door has closed. Others may disagree with that. There's no case law on this. Builder's remedy is a legal theory that's never been tested in court, so we're all clear. So our position is, after today's action, the door has closed, and that we need to go to the second step to check that box with HCD. And when we go through that process, it's satisfying what HCD believes is a 100% compliant housing element.
Yeah. Jackie, to your point as to the definition of substantive and what isn't substantive, would you have, did you or do you consider the comments from HCD in December to have been substantive or not? I mean, they didn't come back to us, right? Because I think the direction we gave is, we don't need to bring it back if they're not substantive. But I've gotten the sense that some folks think that they were substantive. But I'm trying to understand, I don't want the same thing to happen, assuming they were considered substantive. How would you, how would you, anyone, I mean?
I'll take a crack at it. I mean, the comments, again, we got back was not like, you need to add substantive. Listen, as Jackie said, if we're getting feedback that there, you really need to look at adding additional strategies or policies, they're not going to tell us what they are, but they'll say, we've gotten this feedback from community members and groups, and we've looked at your analysis, and we think to further fair housing, you need to add additional policies and programs. What we've been hearing thus far, and we anticipate hearing going forward, is not, you needed to add this and that and that, but more just, can you further explain this? Can you make your milestones clearer in your work program? I don't quite understand that. Can you provide some additional analysis on this that justifies that? And that's the kind of feedback that we've heard thus far, and we anticipate we'd hear those kind of things going forward, but not things that essentially change what's in our work program in terms of adding new things or substantially changing the direction on things that are already there.
So the answer is no. The initial feedback received was more clarification.
Okay. All right. I just, yeah, I don't think it's unreasonable to bring it back, even if it's for a brief conversation. I understand the need to move quickly. I know, Michael, I think you cited sort of grants. I mean, I have an email that shows that some of those grants aren't due till the end of the year, the DOT grants, and so it seems to me we have time. But I also understand you want to wrap this up. I get it, I get it. But it seems to me, and this will be my last comment, that we're going forward with an extreme amount of certainty, which is fine, right? Which is great. I hope you're right. But I would like to touch it, again, as a council, just to have a brief discussion even. It can be like a 10-minute meeting for all I care. I just want to sort of hear and know what happened. And I know an info memo can do that, but I think that's distinctly different. Let's just say we get the info memo, and there's something in there, and we're like, hey, wait a minute. What is that? Then we're going to need to go through the process to schedule a meeting. We're back at the same place that we're recommending now, is just getting a placeholder, if you will, to try to bring it back for a brief discussion. That's all I'm going to say. But thank you so much for all the work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, council member. Go back to Councilor Dwan.
Sorry, Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Just to sort of clarify that point, so, you know, I think there's a lot of good conversation here, council member. The key piece to bear in mind is, obviously, the housing element is a critical part of the general plan, so there's a lot of language replacing that. We really consider the Housing Catalyst Work Plan as our implementation plan, and we actually have an update coming on Monday to HCD that will then be cross-referenced to council in August. So that will actually give us a great opportunity to give you an update through that process to say where we're at and what happened while we were away in the recess, and then continue the conversation without having to set a separate item.
Okay.
Okay. Councilor Dwan?
I'm going to echo what my colleagues, thank you very much on your incredible hard work, and I know the constituent appreciate it. And I, you know, even Jackie and I have little differences, but I trust her toward this last agenda prior to leaving us. I just wanted to say thank you and congratulation on your retirement. I ask all of us to approve the staff memo, so I'm going to call the question at this point.
Okay. To call the question, we need to vote on that, and that requires two-thirds.
Yes.
Okay. Let's vote on voting, which I think you may have been our last hand, but let's do it anyway.
Yes.
I heard a door, so. And Batra?
Yes.
Okay, so we have nine yeses and two noes. Ortiz and Candela's voted no.
Okay. So let's vote on the substitute motion, which is to accept the staff recommendation.
Yes. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six yeses, and the noes are Jimenez, Torres, Cohen, Ortiz, and Candela's. Batra voted yes. His machine's not working. So the yes votes are Mahan, Kamai, Davis, Dwan, Foley, and Batra.
Okay. That passes. Thank you to staff once again for all of your work on this over what has now been multiple years. Councilor Foley already did it, but I did want to also recognize Jackie for 15 years of service to the city and our residents. Thank you for everything you've done to champion our working families and keep the importance of affordable housing and our community plan and homelessness kind of top of mind for everyone. Really appreciate your leadership and all of your, all of your hard work. And this is an appropriate item to end on, our pro-housing designation program. We're going to get this done. So thank you, thank you to Jackie once again for all of your service to the city. Let's give Jackie one more round of applause. And who is doing the short staff presentation? Kristin, you're up again? Okay.
Yes, and Jackie.
And Jackie? All right. Good, I was worried Jackie was leaving the building for a minute there.
I know.
Okay, not yet. All right.
All right. I'm Jackie, and I'm here, mayor and council members, to talk to you about our pro-housing designation application. I'm joined today by Chris Burton and Kristin Clements. This item is to authorize staff to submit an application to the state for San Jose to receive a pro-housing designation. This designation is closely related to the housing element that you just heard, and so I'm going to turn it over to Kristin to explain a few details.
Thanks, Jackie. This pro-housing designation program is relatively new. It was authorized by the state through the 2019-2020 Budget Act, and it's administered by the same people at HCD as are reviewing our housing element. They try to match the teams for both programs. The program's basically the carrot that rewards jurisdictions that are doing the right thing and supporting housing development. The state gives credit for existing policies and programs that we've got in place and those in the housing element specifically called out that we promised to get into place in the following two years. As of last Thursday, 12 jurisdictions in California had received the designation. 11 are in final stages of review for that, and another 25 jurisdictions have submitted for the designation. Other big cities that do have it already, San Diego, Oakland, Sacramento, and LA. San Francisco is in the middle of the process. So in short, this is the group of big cities that San Jose should be part of, and we were going to bring this to you a few months back, but decided to just team it with the housing element and go from there. Really what the pro-housing designation gets you is a competitive advantage in certain programs administered by HCD, but also the Strategic Growth Council, and then some programs by Caltrans. The last item is actually pretty brand-new. There is a new pro-housing incentive pilot program. The state just awarded 18 jurisdictions in the state, a total of $33 million. You have to have a pro-housing designation to get the money, and the use of the grant is something that would accelerate affordable housing production or preservation, or both. So that's exciting. There is also a rumor that at some point, the debt limit allocation for bond cap and the Tax Credit Allocation Committee and the Treasury's office may also institute additional points for jurisdictions that have pro-housing designations, but that's not yet in place. You need 30 points of a threshold to get the designation on programs and policies across four different categories. This is our projected scoring. Out of a total of possible 60 points, we self-score that we would receive approximately 43, if we can argue for all of the enhancements that also apply, which is a little esoteric, so that's why we're going to work with staff at the state. Of the 43 points, 39 are for existing programs and policies. Only four points are for proposals that would be new, that we would put in place for those points. And really, the four points would be for these three policies, which are taken from the housing element. And by approving submission of this application, the council's basically indicating its willingness to support staff's work on these three items when they come back in front of council. It does not tie your hands, and we may not necessarily need these points, but we are tying it to items that clearly would be eligible under the housing element. So these three are, the first is to modify development standards to promote greater development intensity in Rincon South, which has been on planning's plate for a while, and that's going to get done. To establish the ministerial approval processes that Ruth actually mentioned for infill housing that meets the SEQA exemption standard and provides onsite affordable units and meets other city standards, so that's exciting. And then finally, to actually restart the amnesty program for legalizing unpermitted accessory dwelling units. So, you know, if we promise to take on new work, the state does check back to see if we, if we did that work. And, very simple, next step, if you approve this item, staff will submit the application as soon as possible. The state has 60 days to review our application and get back to us, and then work with us and provide technical assistance in order to maximize the points that we score. And their goal really is to have as many cities as possible, get the designation if they are doing the good work. And so with that, happy to entertain any questions.
Great. Thank you. Let's go to public comment.
Paul, followed by Blair.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. It appears to me now that you need the pork. You need us now in order for you to meet the housing goals of the, of the, of the housing element. Now you need us. You see, and this is, this is what pisses me off, is that the exploitative behavior on the part of the city that exploits our conditions to get the grant funding, and then once you get it, you dog us out. I mean, literally dog us out. And let me give you an example on how you did it. 95% to 115% of market rate housing goals have been met from 2016 till this quarter. 2016 till this quarter. That is nine years in the same time period. The threshold of 25% of ALI, DLI, low-income housing, all the rest, has never broken 25% from 2016 till now. Now, this is by design. This isn't, this didn't just happen by accident. That's why I'm glad Jackie's gone. Bye, get out of here. We don't need you no more, because this is what you did. This is you.
Blair?
Hi. Thanks for those statistics by Paul. It was my understanding that our affordable housing, truly affordable housing, was at around 18% by around 2015 or 16, and that has climbed to 25%. If Paul's offering more honest statistics, then good. I need to hear that. I need to know that. So thank you. And just overall, I'm pretty fairly thankful for the work Jackie's done over the years, and it's just nice to be here at this item at this time. at this item at this time, and when the last time shall be at public comment time, and just thanks for her years of work.
Back to the council.
Thank you. Councilor Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say, I'm excited about this application. I think it's, you know, I think our city's been a leader in pushing for housing, and I'm always proud to tell people about the work that we're trying to do. And I know that we're, we're held up by the economics and the market and other things, but not because of our objectives as a city. And when I, I think I mentioned this story before, when I go to League of Cities as a, as a member of the board, I hear truly what it sounds like to be non-pro-housing. There's a lot of cities out there who are. And then, under this kind of guise of being, for local control, the organ, pushing the organization to, to push back against anything from the state that actually pushes for housing. And then, the League of Cities going out and saying, using the stories of the cities that are building good housing, to say, "See, cities are doing what they're supposed to do," without actually standing up to the cities that aren't doing what they're supposed to do. And that's what I'm trying to change in their, in their organization, by saying, "You have to hold accountable the cities that aren't doing enough if you're going to tell the, if you're going to tell the legislature to back off." So, I'm proud to be from a city that isn't standing, isn't doing that. There are two, three cities this year that actually dropped out of the League of Cities because the League of Cities wasn't successful enough at stopping the state from pushing them to build housing. There were, anyway, three, three, like Redondo Beach and a couple other, you know, cities in Southern California who, who've dropped their membership because they're not happy that they, that their anti-housing message isn't getting through. So, anyway, that's a long way of saying I'm excited about this. I move that we approve this application.
Second.
Great. Thank you, council member. Councilor Duane, did you want to, I saw your hand up. Was it just to make the motion? Okay. And then, finally, Councilor Batra?
I am. Applying for this thing, for being a pro-housing and having all those commitment items, which we talked about in the work plan for the housing element, and especially accelerating the production and making sure that we are not going to have segregated society, I think is an excellent amount of effort, and hence, I totally support the application, and, and we deserve the title. Thank you very much for all the work.
Thank you, council member. Agreed. Let's vote. Excellent. Okay. Well, thank you all. That was a marathon meeting. We got through a lot of important items tonight. Thank you again to staff, and thank you again to Jackie. Don't be, don't be a stranger. Come visit. We'll give you your two minutes anytime. Same thing I told Sam. Two minutes, anytime. All right. So, we're on to open forum, opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items pertaining to city business that were not on today's agenda. Tony?
Blair, followed by Paul.
Hi. Thank you. Blair Beakwin here. I guess I wanted to comment that, you know, with all the Measure E issues, very interestingly, it's set up yourselves to really have a more deeper understanding of how to talk about comprehensive issues. But it was mentioned by Mayor Mahan that, you know, cities like LA and I guess San Diego, where I'm currently living, they're speaking more in terms of just issues of shelter. They're not talking in terms of affordable housing, comprehensive services, preventative services, and good tenant rights issues. Boy, that's another one I should, I need to add to the list, tenant rights issues. So, you know, when you, when you add all those things up, we're talking about those things very much in San Jose. Congratulations. That's, it sets a good course for other cities of California to understand how they can work and talk about issues, if nothing else. And I think, I hope we've learned important lessons that, even as Mayor Mahan has come up with good initial ideas of quick-term housing, we've instead trying to work for more progressive, yet really stable, good ideas about affordable housing, and the bond issue that Councilperson Kamay said. We should just really commend what Measure E initially started out to do. They, it did a really nice thing, and we should really, and thank you that we're respecting it. With my remaining time, I wanted to comment that it's important that we got a few more weeks to work on budget issues, and we can line item law enforcement if we really have to. I hope we can. I hope we can look at tech things where needed, and if things are a bit redundant and over the top, we can bring it back a bit. And I think that's important to consider in the future of tech issues, as I always try to mention. And thanks for the meeting tonight.
Paul?
Yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. First of all, I want to talk about the mural right there on Oak Street, on Oak and First. I don't know if Councilman Torres is aware, but the mural has been defaced, and it has, it has graffiti on it. And the man was kind enough, he said, he set a deadline that he was going to paint over it, and he didn't do that. He did not do that. And I thank him for that. He was, he was kind enough and sensitive enough to know the importance of this mural to this community. So, what I'd like to do is encourage Councilman Torres's office to possibly, maybe we can have a fundraiser or, you know, something around this issue, and possibly get the graffiti taken off, and maybe, maybe just the whole thing touched up. You know, if it's, if it's going to stay there, obviously, he wants it to stay there. He's allowing it to stay there. Why not just like, I mean, just really, really, you know, do some good quality work on, and have a fundraiser around it? That's number one. Number two is, I want to talk about the banners on Willow Street. The banners, they're, they're, they're nonexistent, number one. Number two is that I would like banners that stay, just like the Italianos have it over there in Little Italy. They did an excellent job of honoring their ancestors and their elders. And so, what I'd like is, right there on Caliwillo, right there in front of Low Rider Building, who but San Madrid? A likeness of San Madrid, and then the history of the Low Rider Building right there in front of it, and then the one in front of Sacred Heart Church, right there. You got a pole right there, flag coming down, Father Anthony Soto, Father Moria, Father Mackenzie. To talk about the history of these men that made, literally made history, and now it's our generation's turn to look.
Back to council.
Thank you. Everybody, have a great evening. We're adjourned.